Please stand if you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence.
I, the Pledge of Allegiance, to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1A, official meeting notification. Dr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings have been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. Item B, roll call.
Medved.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Barney, myself is here. Loth is absent, excused. Pollak.
Here.
Higginbotham.
Here.
Brown. Thank you. Item 2, approval of the agenda. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Higginbotham, second.
Tracy.
Oh, Tracy. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item 3, reports, district administrator update. Dr. Reuter.
Thank you. We're back to school as of Friday. Our teachers reported last week Tuesday, they had time in their classrooms as well as some building level meetings, and then Wednesday as well to prepare. We had open house last week at all of our elementaries, as well as freshman orientation here at the high school, and I believe tomorrow night we kick off orientation at KMS. It'll be a split time for 6th grade and then 7th and 8th grade are combined. So, we're back in the swing of things, and then we have a district kickoff here at the PAC tomorrow, welcoming all staff, every employee group back with a light breakfast, and then 8 o'clock will be keynote from myself, Mr. Mizziak, Mr. Nowak, Frank Lord will speak as well as Mandy Race about some of the different operational aspects of the district. We'll send everyone back to their buildings, they'll have some building level meetings, and then they engage in professional development over the next day and a half or two days or so, and then time on Thursday to put the last finishing touches on their lesson plans and classroom. And the children show up bright and early Friday morning and we start our school year. So, we're excited to get back in the swing of things and bring that muscle memory back to teaching and learning for everyone, and I'm sure every child at home is anxiously awaiting their return to Germantown. Also, fall sports season kicked off a couple weeks ago. We had our first home game last Friday night, and I was in attendance, and then every time there was an announcement, they talked about the, every different group that is engaging in tournaments, games that were coming up, matches, so it's great to see, you know, not only school back in the swing of things, but all of our core curriculars as well. Something we should be really proud of, today a press release went out from the communications office regarding an award we received. We received the AP Pay Center Award as a Level 2 Advanced Placement Participant, and what that means is that 20% of our high school body last year took an AP test, and of that 20%, 65% scored a 3 or more, and as you know, scoring a 3 or more on an AP exam, you receive college credit. So, it's a great honor. It's the first time we, as a school district, specifically Germantown High School, have been awarded that. Our goal is to move to that Level 1 and improve to more than 70%. So, as we continue to look at programming and influence programming, that's an area that shows that we're offering great opportunities, and our kids are engaging at a high level that only helps them beyond their time at Germantown High School. Then the last thing I have this evening is just a reminder to the general public to subscribe to Board Happenings annually to make sure that you're receiving the feedback, or the minutes and information of kind of encapsulating what happens at these board meetings through that online email subscription. Melissa Timmerman from my office consolidates the information and gets that sent out, and so anyone that is not receiving that, please re-subscribe, or, I'm sorry, subscribe and be able to see what's going on. You don't have to watch the entire board meeting, you can at least get a snapshot.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item 4, citizen comments. Unless I do not have a sheet, no one signed up? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 5, consent agenda. We're gonna go through these individually. Item A, approval of the July 17th, 2023 meeting minutes. I believe we owe a small correction.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, item A, the minutes of July 17th, 2023, with the adjustment to item 1 showing that Vice President Ewer called the meeting to order instead of President Medved.
Second.
Barney with the motion, Pollak with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item B, approval of teacher resignation.
Mr. Nowak. Thank you. You have in front of you resignations from the time of our last meeting. I will point out that as liquidated damages are noted as of this morning, all liquidated damages have been paid. We're asking for release of the following teachers from, and others from their positions this evening.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations as presented.
I'll second.
Barney with the motion, Mr. Ewer with the second. Any discussion?
I do have some. It was listed as teacher resignations. I didn't know if there's social worker. In our committee meeting earlier this evening, we discussed that position. I just wanted to be clear that it's not just teachers in regards to what we're approving as far as resignations.
Correct. It's listed as that because the social worker is technically under a teacher contract, so they're pooled together here in that way.
Okay. Anything further?
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item C, teacher contracts. Mr. Nowak.
You have in front of you an extensive list of teacher hires, and again, to Mr. Ewer's point, there are more than teachers that are referenced as, referenced as hires here. We're very excited about this group. It brings us a mix of experience with, you know, people who come to us with strong backgrounds and ready to learn as new teachers in some cases. We ask for approval of those listed, and they include both regular and limited term contracts.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve contracts as listed in our board background.
I'll second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Ewer with the second. Any discussion?
I do, and I apologize. We didn't have this covered in our committee meeting earlier, and I did have one question on it. Can you just go over a regular contract and limited term contract as far as what that means for these staff members?
Sure. So, a regular contract is, in general, a contract that is renewing. It's bound to state law relative to the non-renewal process, in terms of us needing to give fair notice if the contract isn't going to be renewed. A limited term contract, on the other hand, can mean a few different things. On one hand, it's maybe for a position that we know will only be limited in nature. For example, there might be a teacher who's on leave for a year, or something of that nature, in which case we know it's only for one year. As the year progresses, likewise, we'll have positions that are maybe for only a semester or for, you know, a little more than a semester, that type of thing. Those are limited term because they're not, they're, they're less than the scope of the school year. And in those situations, we're not bound to, I believe it's 118.22 in state law, and those non-renewal guidelines.
Yes, thank you. Second question, I know several board members received emails regarding some kindergarten teacher or need for, potential need for it. It sounds like there was a narrative in, in the community that would depict that the district office wasn't aware of the situation or monitoring it, and it appears that that was not the case. Obviously, we're monitoring that consistently as we build and as students enroll. Is that, to my best of my understanding, I guess?
That's very accurate, and, and, you know, I've been in this role, this is my eighth year of, of this time of year, but that's always what we do, and it stretches beyond me. I mean, our office is primary to this, but it, it stretches into superintendent's office, it stretches into teaching and learning. We always monitor that very, very closely for consideration levels. We know, we know that beginning literally in the spring, in April, where we are, and we sort of have projections as to where we think things will go, but it always comes to, you know, this time of year when we have late enrollments and things like this. Our district is maybe a little more predictable than others, but there are some districts where, you know, late enrollment into school is a regular thing and is, is very, very difficult to follow. So, the process that we've gone through is, is not a surprise. You know, we, we know when this is gonna happen. Dr. Reuter will talk in the coming months about policy relative to class size that will help this to some degree, but at the same time, it's always going to be something that we have to continually monitor.
And I would share, Mr. Ewer, you'll see a limited term contract for 4th grade and a limited term contract at Rockfield and a limited term contract at MacArthur for kindergarten. Those were a result of our last data poll three weeks ago that did show a change in enrollment from what we had previously pulled two weeks prior that led to an added section of kindergarten of both Rockfield and MacArthur. The reason the Rockfield position is for 4th grade is a 4th grade teacher who had previously taught kindergarten moved to that section, so we hired limited term for 4th grade. But we did have even since then fluctuation with unenrolled children at those grade levels. So, it's a constant review of data, and then it's about the timing of when we will recommend to the board to approve new sections that weren't in our original staffing plan way back in May.
And my, my concerns with it were a, obviously, it was around class sizes was, was the information we were provided from some of the parents, but some of the information they had in regards to confidential information of students as to why maybe we need to have different sizes for consideration, class sizes, as well as where that information would have had to come from in order for those parents to receive that. I would caution the, the staff in that case, I'm sure your offices are open to reassure we are monitoring those types of things, and we're taking obviously all of that into consideration as a professional school district, but maybe it's not best to work up some of our community members prior to making sure we have all the appropriate internal information as well as releasing confidential information.
Yes, it's been addressed with our administrative team confidentiality, and then that trickled into conversations at the site levels. Additionally, it's easy to talk about one school with one grade level in isolation. We look at it across the system, because if there are 24 kids in a section that we deem 24 as a tipping point, and that's why I'll be bringing forward class size policy to you for next year, if we deem that a tipping point, we have to look at every class and every, in that grade level band across four elementaries. It's not just isolated to one school. And so, then we think about the totality, what the ramifications are, quality of programming, but then also we drill down to unique needs of each classroom.
Thank you.
I had one other question. We had a handful of people that were concerned about turnover in Germantown. Can you address that publicly as well and explain that this is kind of normal this time of the year going into a new school year?
Yeah, I, I would like to kind of assess the area. I would kind of like to know what other districts have gone through, but, you know, going back to previous years, as recent as last year, we are on the low side of turnover, and it's, it's, you know, some of the districts that you wouldn't think have a lot of turnover often do. This year, we've had more, and I would like to update the, the board at our next meeting relative to just how much more and what it looks like relative to previous years. I was sharing with a few board members, you know, we went through some, a wave, if you will, of, of departures, resignations early in the year, early in summer, and this, this has happened routinely where August sets forth sort of another wave. There are districts that have unique needs. A common narrative is, as has been shared, is, well, a position opened up in the town that I live in that's, you know, 30 minutes away, and it means significant, significant things for my family. There are all kinds of reasons. I'd like to share with those at the next meeting what those are. So, to say I'm not concerned or we're not concerned isn't, isn't accurate. We always are, but we'll, we'll update relative to retention.
And we're doing the exit interviews to make sure we know what the reasons are?
We, we have, we have regular communication with, as resignation letters come in and we're communicating with them, we have those discussions.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we are looking for that report to come to the committee.
Okay.
So, if our next committee meeting, we'd be ready to go with all that.
Very good. Any further questions?
All righty. I'll entertain a motion.
Oop, we had it.
Oh, sorry. All right, Pollak and Ewer with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item D, approval of donations. Do you want to read those out?
I would love to. So, again, we have some very generous people in the community that have donated for a variety of reasons to the Germantown School District. An anonymous donor, a Briggs and Stratton lawnmower engine for our Autos Department, Regalware Inc., 650-piece family cookware sets for American Kitchen valued at $2,700 for GHS Family and Consumer Science, our United Backpack, United Way Backpack Coalition provided backpacks and school supplies valued at $2,200 to Germantown School District families, Amy Bell's 5th grade class of 2023 via the PTA, a $420 gift card for the class, one collision county line at $250 donation to Girls Swim and Dive, anonymous donation also of $1,000 to the Girls Swim Team, another anonymous donation of 250 to our Germantown Swim and Dive Team, Dr. Jacob Dowd, $250 to Girls Swim and Dive, an anonymous donor of $10,994.77 to our Boys Basketball Team, Salon Jade, $250 towards our Germantown Swim, Hubertus Corecantic Center, $250 towards Girls Swim and Dive, Nathan Knudsen, Tooth Town Dentistry for Kids, $1,000 for Girls Swim and Dive, Westbury Bank, $250 for Girls Swim and Dive, Leadership Germantown, $200 towards our green space project at the high school, Germantown Park and Rec, $1,802.50 towards the Boys Soccer Club, and American Legion Post, $1,000 towards baseball teams for upkeep of our field, fences, and dugouts.
Wow, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to thank the donors for their generosity and approve the donations as listed.
Second.
Mr. Higginbotham with the motion. Mr. Ewer with the second. Any discussion?
Whoever's managing the Girls Swim and Dive Team.
We would like to have them work with us, yes.
I, I don't think there's been a meeting that's gone by that they have not received a donation. That's amazing. Obviously, all the donors, fantastic.
Yes, thank you.
We have to get them on staff for fundraising.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item 6, Teaching and Learning Committee.
Teaching and Learning Committee. We met August 14th at the district office, discussed several subjects. Brought to us for approval from the committee was Brain Pop, which is a video-based program that would assist curriculum or fill in some spots in curriculum, for approval at $15,287.25. Our committee wasn't reviewing it in regards to the financial aspect that we went to finance, but we did put a hold on it for some more information regarding concerns on content issues. So, Jake's gonna bring that back in the future as we can vet that a little bit further.
Okay.
We had a discussion around a fall pilot program for 6th through 8th grade reading. The two programs that were brought forward are HMH Indu Literature and McGraw-Hill Study Sync. Both those would dovetail with our current elementary school pilot that will be going on this fall, and the staff seemed to be encouraged that we could do those simultaneously. If Jake's out there, if I misstate anything, please step in. We did notice some content issues similar to the elementary side, but we are running it through the same full process that that elementary program was presented with, so I believe we have a nice sturdy foundation as to how we're gonna go and edit, not edit, I should say, vet the materials for effectiveness. So, with that, I'll bring forward with positive recommendation to approve a pilot for reading resources, HMH, Indu literature, McGraw-Hill, and McGraw-Hill Study Sync, starting the fall of 23, 24 school year.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation. Does not require a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
We did discuss annual adoption of standards. I appreciate the board's willingness to take a pause on that and let all members vet it into the detail in which they saw fit. We had a lengthy discussion in how adopting the standards in, similar to the pre, not similar, but to the same manner in which we did the previous year, and then how those standards are built from or built off of and prioritized. We can kind of put our own district's priorities into those or pull from those. So, with that, I want to have a long, a long positive recommendation. Sit tight. Positive recommendation to the full school board to adopt Wisconsin academic standards in the area of literacy, math, social studies, science, K through 12, with the following. I move to approve the opposed notice of student academic standards that are in effect for the 23, 24 school year. As said, proposed notice, or proposed notice was presented to the board in written form with the date of July 17th, 2023, in the board's packet of supplemental materials for that meeting, all pursuant to Section 120-12, Sub-13, Sub-B, and Sections 18.301 GA of the State Standards. One moment. And I move that the board direct the administration to provide parents and guardians of the Germantown School District with the notice of the board, board adopted student academic standards that are in effect for the 23, 24 school year and the school district website, on the school district website. I'm done.
Okay, so I come over the positive recommendation.
That is a positive, yes, the positive recommendation.
Okay, that does not require a second. Any discussion?
I do appreciate the diligence of the board and digging in this a little further. I do appreciate that. As always, more information is good, and being able to vet the process, especially with new board members, I think is good for all of us. So, thank you for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I will do it.
Yes, sorry, I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have for you.
All right, moving on to item 7, Personnel Committee. August 28th, 2023 committee meeting update.
And that was today. Mr. Nowak presented a report, a light report regarding current staffing as we enter the school year. We've discussed some of those already through prior actions of the board this evening, so I'll keep it brief. He did highlight the social worker position that we do have open, which opened on the 14th or 15th, I believe, of August. It's a more difficult position to fill, so we are gonna be looking at potentially using internal staff that has that specific type of background to help overlap that wall while we find a qualified candidate. That's it. We do have four openings in our maintenance and custodial staff that are ongoing, two of recent note, which we approved resignation and retirement this evening, and two that have been a little, little longer in term of open vacancy. And then we went into the compensation study. So, districts moving forward with our compensation study. They have reached out to several districts around us using comparable or measurably comparable stats or data points to pull information in regards to the, their methods and processes, and they will continue to update the district with this study.
Okay.
And that is all I have from that meeting. Those were just reports. We have no items for action. If anyone has questions, I could go into detail a little bit more on the study, but most of us were here for that.
Any comments, questions? Okay, we'll move along. Item 8, Building and Grounds Committee. Mr. Pollak.
Thank you. Big news out of the Buildings and Grounds Committee is that schools are ready for the first day of school. There, all of the major projects have been completed. There are still some smaller projects, some work orders that, that are still being worked on, but everything is, is set and in place for Friday. At the next Building and Grounds Committee meeting, there will be a larger project list overview that, that will go through as far as all of the different work that's either been done or slated to be done. We also got an update on the high school green space status. The installation of the, the door that allows access to the courtyard's been delayed primarily to ensure its ADA compliance. Work will move forward when all materials have been received, and there's a window of opportunity where students won't be disrupted. Expect the time of work is approximately three to five days. There will still be some opportunity to continue to move forward with regards to some of the interior work that will not be disruptive to the students, so we will continue to move forward with that as, as we can. And lastly, the night lock device installation, we got an update on that, that over 500 devices have been installed in all of our buildings, and the installation is done using internal resources. The fire department and police department have been provided the appropriate device keys to assist in case of an emergency, and the training on how to use those devices will begin tomorrow. That is all.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to Finance Committee. Item 9, Mr. Barney.
Yes, Finance Committee met this evening. We approved the monthly vouchers and then had a brief discussion on board item 9B, which is the camera and door program merge. I'll jump right into that because we have a motion from committee, which is motion from Finance Committee with a positive recommendation to the board to approve the camera and door program merge.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation. Does not require a second. I understand we have an adjustment maybe?
Yes. For clarity, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to be as follows. Motion to bring forward with a positive recommendation to the Board of Education to approve merging the district camera and door systems to complex in an amount not to exceed $107,000, sorry, $107,263.18 using general fund dollars.
I'll be looking for a second.
A second then.
Okay, Mr. Brown? Mr. Barney with the most, Mr. Brown with the second. Any discussion on that? We'll start with the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And we'll also vote on the motion, the original motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
And that is all from Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barney. Moving on to item 10, New Business. Discussion and action to approve interim Director of People's Services, Dr. Reuter.
Yes, thank you. This evening, we have Mrs. Crystal Callan, if you want to join us at the microphone over there. I'm recommending Crystal this evening for the role of interim Director of People's Service for the 23, 24 school year. Crystal might look familiar. She's worked in the Germantown School District at the high school level for 16 years as a special education teacher. In this past year, we utilized Esther funding to create a special education program support role that Crystal stepped in. During that time, she worked with our building level administration, teachers, families. She did work as an LEA. She, she helped plan out the audit, the self-audit that we went through last year, as well as work through multiple compliance issues and alternative placements with students. This summer, Crystal has assisted us with the void of the position at district office and done a lot of great work, meeting with families of students with significant needs and helping transition them, whether it be to an alternative site or school. transition them, whether it be to an alternative site for schools at the start of the school year, or programming and making sure we have the right supports within the school district. She continues to work on compliance issues with IEPs and making sure every child that has an IEP is getting what they need when they need it, and it's appropriate. And then she has also worked with our school sites. I witnessed it firsthand last week, Thursday, as well as members of the people's service department with certain trainings, as well as working through summary evaluations and current evaluations we have for special ed students coming this fall as the school year begins. So I think she's going to be great. I've noticed in very short-term her effective communication skills, her strategic thinking, really looking for an answer and thinking through many, multiple facets and not just jumping at the first thing in front of her, and her timely ability to respond to critical matters. So I can let the board ask fire away at Crystal, but I think it'd be a great addition to our district as an interim position for this upcoming school year.
Very good. Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you for stepping up and joining us in this very important role at a difficult time. We do appreciate you wanting to help us out. I think you know what you got yourself into, but we appreciate you doing it.
I would have to say it has not gone unnoticed in the community between your office and Mr. Reuters. The efforts that have been put in over the summer specific to IEPs, I've heard the communication's been greatly improved and the work that's being put in to get those to where they need to be has not gone unrecognized. So thank you.
Would you like to add anything?
Well, as Dr. Reuter mentioned, I'm new to this position but not new to Germantown School District, so I appreciate the opportunity. Most of the time, I'm very excited. So yeah, just thanks to everybody for giving me this opportunity. Excited to dig in.
Excellent. Thank you for stepping up. I'm extremely confident you'll be able to handle it, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the hire of Crystal Callen as the interim people's services director and provide her a one-year contract for the 2023-24 school year. The salary for the 2023-2024 school year will be $105,000.
Second.
I'll give it to Ewer with the second. Mr. Barney with the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Thank you. All right, moving on to item B, Discussion and Action to Approve 2023-2024 Hourly Advising Positions. Ms. Unerl.
Hello. Mr. Novak and I are seeking approval to allow the hourly advising positions in front of you tonight for both Germantown High School and Kennedy Middle School for the 2023-24 school year. Additionally, as part of our co-curricular compensation study, we are going to be looking at hourly positions as well as contracted co-curricular positions. And sometime this winter, early spring, we'll bring forward a recommendation to see if we need to change some of our current practices regarding hourly positions and contracted positions for co-curriculars.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the hourly advising positions as presented.
Second.
Mr. Brown with the motion. Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion?
I do have a quick question. Page two, under Key Club Co-Advisor, Marin Seagird is listed twice. I don't know if that's a duplicate in line or the duplicate in name.
So when that position was formed here, they had two positions for it, and she is currently doing the role of two people for that group.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ewer.
A couple of questions. First being, scroll down to the bottom here. I noticed a note at the bottom that says, "Any hours over max are paid at an event work rate of 1550." So this motion is to approve the staff member to that advisory position, the hours that are noted in this field as well as at that rate, and then any hours over that approved hours that are marked here would be paid at that 1550?
I guess I don't know where you're reading that.
So the document provided to us, it's...
The 1650?
There's 1650, but at the bottom, so there's an hour, right? So 40. I'll go with the first one, advisor, group nine, number one, 40 hours, 1650, 660, and then the name of the staff member. At the bottom of this, it does note that, it said, "Any hours over max are paid at event work rate of 1550?" So if that person would...
I would ignore that. I'm not sure where that came from in the printing process, so I apologize for that. They are capped at that allotment of hours. They do not go over that amount of hours in a given school year.
And then, second, any of the staff being recommended to fill these roles face disciplinary measures while filling their advisory roles or any other role as an employee in the district? And I'm not asking for specifics. I just want a general yes or no.
You just asked for a yes or no? My response is going to be it's probably situational. I could point to a lot of different things that could happen that would warrant us being in conversation about said employees' continued employment in the district. So my quick response is it would probably depend on what's occurred and if...
No, I'm just, so you two are providing a list of subject or staff members to fill these advisory roles, and I'm wondering if that was taken in consideration before you made this recommendation?